Good evening. I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council. It is Monday, March 16th, 2020, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Counselor Herrera?
Here.
Counselor Parsons?
She is excused for the moment.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Counsel President Freeman?
Here.
Counselor Reed?
Here.
Counselor Kohler?
Here.
And Youth Counselor Matthews?
Here.
Thank you very much. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Be careful over there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm afraid you're going to roll right off.
I know.
Watch out for the extra.
Thank you very much. I would like to, with the council's consensus, to add an agenda item at this point to suspend the rules to allow Counselor Parsons to participate by phone. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's correct. As I said in my email, I believe the rules could be suspended. We did it once before, so it would be appropriate for a motion to suspend the rules. And if that motion passes, then a motion to allow telephone meeting. And Counselor Parsons would not take part in those two votes. And if the vote is successful, then she would join the meeting.
All right. Thank you very much.
And, Madam May, if I may, we discussed before, the rest of the issue with regard to telephone meetings will defer till the end of the meeting and under other business, if that's okay with council.
So this is just to suspend the rules for right now, and then at the end of the meeting, we will discuss more fully telephone meeting options as part of our continuation of operations for the council under different circumstances. So with that, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules. Oh, it's Counsel President Freeman.
I saw move.
Oh, my gosh. Move that the Kaiser City Council suspend the rules in order to allow Counselor Parsons to participate by phone.
Can I second that?
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council suspend the rules so that Counselor Parsons may participate by phone. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Is that sufficient?
We need the actual motion now. That was to suspend the rules.
That was to suspend the rules. Okay.
So just the motion to...
Move to allow the rules to continue with that.
I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt to move the rules of the suspension, suspend the rules to allow phone participation by Counselor Parsons. Whew. Okay.
Can I second that? I thought we did that already. Are you wrong?
You suspended the rules to vote on it is the difference.
To take up the matter, and then this is the...
That makes sense. Thank you.
So the first motion was to suspend the rules to take up the matter. This is not on tonight's agenda, and this one is to suspend the rules to allow participation by Counselor Parsons. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Counselor Parsons, you are now here by present. If you would, go ahead and chime in, ma'am.
Okay, here.
There we go. Counselor Parsons is here. Thank you very much. Committee reports. I have Michael Panalonas here to report on parks, if you want to come on down. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you. I'll start out by saying that Debbie saved me by sending me a note reminding me that I was doing this tonight, or I was totally aloof. So we had the meeting on Tuesday, March 10th. Excuse me, I'm getting ahead of myself. All were present except for one. Some of the things that happened during the meeting, we had an appearance by an innocent citizen, Blaine Elder of Kaiser, asking permission to repaint the gazebo as an Eagle Scout project. There was a discussion about that. It sounds like he will move to do that and work with Robert on getting some of the equipment and things. But he wanted to do it for our future year, for the budget year coming up 2021, so that he would have time to work on it and not be under the gun too much, I think. As far as the memorial policy, Robert summarized at the staff report of the city attorney and pointed out the suggested edits. Dylan moved to recommend to the council to approve the memorial policy as recommended by the city attorney, and the motion was passed. Budget discussion item, Robert Johnson distributed the proposed budget list for the fiscal year 2021, which included the replacement of the play structure and swings at Claggett Creek, which was moved up because of the condition of the items there, as well as other things that are going on with resurfacing and expansion of the parking lot on the other side of Claggett Creek, and replacement of stairs at Northview, repair of asphalt in various areas, installation of power and water and gravel at the Kaiser Rotary Amphitheater, and other things that are going on. Let me see. We're going to do the parks tour for our next meeting, which will be on April 13th. So it's moved to cancel our Parks Board meeting for the 14th. On the parks report, Tanya noted that there was a sign missing from Bob Newton. It sounds like it was being repaired. Insurance report's in good shape. Access road has potholes, and the crew's aware of that. There's also a concern with Ben Miller Park about there's a lot of children playing there with no sidewalks in that area, in that community. And so it was suggested that Tanya go to the Traffic Safety, Bike Ways, Pedestrian Committee meeting to discuss trying to do the safety parts, getting some routes for people to go. Dylan spoke about Sunset, beautiful park. Who will mow it was a concern. And of course, Robert let him know they're on top of that already.
And for anybody watching, if they're wondering why the question was even asked, Darryl Richardson, who lived next door for many, many years, has moved, and he was such a great volunteer in that park, not just because he was a neighbor, but just because he loved to volunteer and make a difference. And it was, you know, just the side of his park, the side of his house, and he was very proud of it. So just to make sure people understand that.
And then, yeah, and then Dave Loudon spoke on Northview. He said that he'd be willing to locate the property corners, and he said that Meadows was perfect, lots of children using the play area. And I used to watch Meadows before, and one thing I can say is one thing walking around there is how all the neighbors kind of keep their areas up against the park looking so nice. So that's kind of a beautiful park. The Northridge, Jeff Sargent said the entrance was hard to find. He said it looked more like a nice well. And I kind of understand the finding a park going on, because I was over at Clearlake for a while and didn't realize the stand of trees was a park, but it's beautiful. Also on Ryan J. Hill, which was a nice park with great signage, there was a concern that there wasn't really anything identifying Ryan J. Hill. And Robert Johnson suggested that Ryan's mother be contacted to talk about with that. I'm not sure what the reasoning was behind that, and so I think that's why Robert suggested following up with her.
I'm a little confused, because we have that memorial on the front with the flags and the sign.
Jeff Sargent said that there wasn't anything, speaking about him, that there were other memorial-type things. I'm not sure. I mean, I haven't been there myself recently, so. On the staff report, Robert talked about the cleanup at the bow ramp was completed, and the bar dust is scheduled for being sprayed. The amphitheater has new fertilizer, and spring park spraying has been done, or will be done in the next month. And then Debbie let us know that the Kaiser Festival Advisory Board has been disbanded, if I recall. And so the approving of the bans for the amphitheater will now come to us, and we're planning to take that up prior to the parks tour at our next meeting. And of course, our council liaison report is always wonderful. And Counselor Herrera urged everyone to stay calm and wash their hands to prevent the spread of the coronavirus. David Loud suggested the city look at buying the pie-shaped piece of property in Northridge. I'm not familiar with that. Maybe someone else is. And Matt reminded us of Daniel Civic Center cleanup. Looked like there was a few people doing a lot of work this last weekend, huh? And that they're going to have a watershed council project coming up at Lock Haven and River. And that Wallace House project is still in the works. And our next meeting will be on April 13th. Any questions? Anything I can answer further?
No. Any questions from anybody? Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and excuse myself from the meeting and head back home. So thank you all, and have a wonderful night.
All right. Thank you. You, too.
Counselor?
Counselor Herrera?
If you have the time this week.
I'll give you a call. I have your number. And it looks like I'm going to be doing some work from home, so maybe I can break out some break time or something to do that.
You're one of the lucky ones. Thank you.
All right.
Right.
Take care, all.
You, too. Thank you very much. That will take us then to public testimony. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda schedule for a public hearing. We have one public hearing tonight, which is the Kaiser Development Code Amendment, Street Standards, Section 2.302. And I've asked Transit Director Colleen Bush to come and give us an update on what's happening, what are the plans are with our Salem area mass transit relative to transit and public health. Thank you so much for being willing to come up on such short notice.
You're welcome. We do this a lot, don't we?
We do.
Okay. So, Colleen Bush, I live in Kaiser. I represent Kaiser on the board for San Kaiser Transit District Chariots. And at this point, we are still running complete service. I know that there has been further updates from federal and local agencies, and we are in the process of putting in procedures to comply with those as much as we can. But please be assured that the buses are cleaned continually throughout the day. They have an extra cleaning, extra strong solution in the evenings, and they are also fumigated. So we're doing as much as we can to help keep our people connecting with our places. Please check chariots.org for updates on if there's any possible service interruptions in the future, also for information regarding the coronavirus scenario.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions? Thank you so much for sharing that with us, and we'll make sure. I believe we have chariots linked on our webpage, and if not, can we put a link there?
I'm positive we do, but if we doubt, we will.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Anybody else? All right. Let's go to our public hearing then. And this is on the Kaiser Development Code Amendment, Street Standards, Section 2.302. And I will open the public hearing. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Brown?
Thank you. On February 12th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider text amendments to allow for a maximum, actually, it was intended to be mostly updating our development code so that we can address all the many different changes that are coming out at the state level, the legislative amendments that we're required to comply with, centered around accessory dwelling units, and the fact that our development code basically spoke to properties, which was vague. And so we would like to update that and make sure that we are addressing the fact that our access easements, currently it used to say that access easements can serve a maximum of four parcels or lots. We would like to clarify that, because that would then imply that nobody could build an accessory dwelling unit. And so we wanted to make sure that we were in compliance with state law and guidance. So we would like to change that to be a maximum of four dwellings. In addition to that, over the years, there have been certain cases where we have issued variances for the Public Works Director as he reviews the analysis of the properties. Occasionally, if there is a partition that occurs along a collector or arteriole, that we have preferred that the additional driveway, the existing house, actually reorient their driveway so that it accesses the access easement instead of onto the collector or arteriole. We have done that in a few examples, and so we would like to actually codify that in our development code so that it gives the Public Works Director the flexibility to require that in certain safety cases. In addition to those changes, we are also, since we had the section open, would like to address our street tree requirement. It used to require that there be two street trees planted per lot, but as our lots become smaller and smaller, sometimes it gets a little hard to plant two lots on a 45-foot length, overpowering both the streetscape as well as the individual lots themselves. So we are recommending that that language be required. One street tree per lot unless that lot is over 60 feet, and then two street trees would be required. So with those changes, Planning Commission recommended unanimously adoption of those, recommended to you a positive implementation of those changes. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of Mr. Brown? Counselor Parsons, did you have any questions?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. Anybody here wish to address the council on this matter? I don't have anybody signed up for a public hearing. Saying none. I will close the public hearing. Counsel President Freeman? Wow. Freeman, I did it again.
I move that the Kaiser City Council direct staff to prepare an ordinance with the findings and the proposed resolution on Street Standards, Section 2.302.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council direct staff to prepare an ordinance with funding to adopt the proposed provisions to Section 2.302 Street Standards. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. That concludes public hearings for this evening, and we will go on to Item 8A, which is Administrative Action. Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association, and I believe they are going to be coming at the next meeting. Okay. So we will postpone that item until our next council meeting. That takes us to Item 8B, the Kaiser Community Band Request for Waiver of Fees for the 2020 Concert. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Kaiser Community Band was formed in 1998 at the request of former city Kaiser Mayor Bob Newton. Mayor Newton wanted a band that would represent the community and furnish music for community functions, as well as music for entertainment. At the request of Mayor Newton, former Salem Public Schools Band Director Roy Shelton recruited community members to form a band and achieved Mayor Newton's goal. Director Shelton conducted the band until his retirement in 2003. Michael Koenig, a former student of Director Shelton, took over conducting the band. The band is active in the area, playing for numerous fundraising events and occasions such as Kaiserfest. Over the last several years, Kaiser Community Band has requested space in the community center to conduct community concerts. The concerts are free to attend. In past years, city council has waived rental fees, staffing costs, and security deposits, which includes Option 1, or which is represented by Option 1, excuse me. Kaiser Community Band has requested the same fee waivers for the 2020 concerts. The concert dates are listed directly below: Wednesday, May 27th, Wednesday, November 11th, and Wednesday, December 16th. All concerts will begin at 7:00 PM and will last approximately one hour. IRIS-B will accommodate each concert. The rental rates for Kaiser Community Center, IRIS-B, listed include a 25% discount for Kaiser citizens or any Kaiser-based 501(c)(3) organization. Kaiser Community Band qualifies for that discount. The rental rates for the rooms, for the room are listed below in the staff report, as are your options. And there are four of them. You can grant the request for complete rental fee waiver, room rental, security cleaning deposit, and staffing costs, which is Option 1, which is what you've done in the past. Two, you can deny the request for a complete rental waiver fee. Number three, you could waive the security and cleaning deposit but charge the room rental fee of $150. Or four, you could waive the security and cleaning deposit and the room rental fee but charge $80 for staffing costs. City Council does not have the ability to waive a certificate of general liability insurance. The Kaiser Community Band will be required to provide the certificate for each concert date. Staff recommends city council discuss the request, consider the options presented, and then direct staff accordingly. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? Okay. Counsel President Freeman, you want to put a motion on the table?
I move that the Kaiser City Council grant the Kaiser Community Band Concert Option 1, which is to grant the request for complete rental fee waiver, which is room rental, security/ cleaning deposit, and staffing costs.
Can I second that?
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council grant the request for a complete rental fee waiver, room rental, security, cleaning deposit, and staffing cost for the Kaiser Community Band. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Just to clarify, that's for all three concerts?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Do we have to amend that, or is that we good?
That's fine.
Okay.
Key Tracy for that? You're welcome.
Okay. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Let the music play on. We don't have anything on the consent calendar tonight, so let's start with Counselor Kohler with our council liaison reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since our last council meeting, I actually did quite a few things and was involved in a lot of things, and so I hope you'll be patient with me as I give report for those things. I was able to go to the Chamber of Commerce greeters at Willow Lake Golf Center, which I appreciated, and that was a lot of fun. I went to the St. Edward's Community Dinner follow-up meetings to the follow-up meeting when we regretfully canceled the Kaiser Community Dinner for this month. And that's a hard thing to do when so many families enjoy a meal there and camaraderie that we always feel. In conjunction with that, the Marion Polk Food Share has provided food for a lot of those things, and we have had confirmed a couple things. One, Marion Polk Food Share services over 100 food sites and over 50 food banks in our area. 70% of the food that they receive is from farms, processors, retail, and post-retail. And usually somebody says, "Well, what is post-retail?" That's food drives and other things like that. And then 15% from the USDA food programs and 15% from the Oregon Food Bank. They have an annual budget of $5.2 million, and this is the month that they look for donations. And any annual donations they get will receive a matching grant. So we encourage you to support the food bank this month. I also had confirmed that on the 31st of this month, they will be receiving a sizable donation from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, a 53-foot load of food, which includes peanut butter, a lot of canned goods, and flour, pasta, and other things totaling just over $44,000. And so that was a pretty exciting thing to be a small part of. Went to the Stormwater Advisory Committee meeting. We talked about post-construction site, best something practiced, BMPs, whatever those are.
Management.
Yeah, management practice is good. And next, the Claggett Creek Watershed Council. We talked about all kinds of things, including the cleanup at the Civic Center this last Saturday, which was a lot of fun. Thank you especially for all those that came, attended that, and made that a successful project. We also talked about significantly soggy day in the park, tray, they call it. And if everything works right, April 18th is when that will be. Of course, the long-range planning meeting last Monday. I attended the chamber board meeting. The parade is, planning is going as the way it should be. The golf tournament's been moved to Wednesday, and they are looking for additional sponsors. The Percy Event is coming up in September, and the 26th may or may not have a book sale. And they talked quite a bit about the charter and the Charter Review Committee. Commissioners' Breakfast, we talked a little bit about universal precautions and COVID-19, tuberculosis in the homeless community, and other things. The Traffic Safety Bike Bed Committee, sorry. They may put together a list of priorities that they have for sidewalks in the future. And they said the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments may have some grants that they may want to apply for, for some sidewalks. I said, "Great. That would be good. Put that together, and we will listen to it." And the Civic Center cleanup was lightly attended, but the great work was accomplished. And again, thanks for everybody that came there. And finally, this is Colon Cancer Awareness Month. Colon cancer is the number-two cause of cancer deaths in the United States. It affects men and women equally. 75% of people diagnosed have no family history of colon cancer, and mostly affects people over 50, but anybody at any age can have colon cancer. So please go to www.ccaliance, which is coloncanceralliance.org, for more information. I encourage you to go get a colonoscopy.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. The City Hall cleanup, I think we had about 40-ish, more than 40 people who were here, and filled the entire 30-yard dumpster with yard debris. So many hands.
We were very spread out.
And we were very spread out. Yes, indeed. And Counsel Reed was among us, so what's up next?
Actually, if we could hear from Youth Counselor Matthews first, I would...
Absolutely.
I appreciate that.
If we bring him up to a microphone, why don't you come up there, to the unused microphone? Thank you so much for joining us tonight. We're very happy to have you.
I'm glad to be here. All right. So as far as the going on at McNary, and I guess other schools around the state, it's closed until the beginning of April, as well as any sports, anything like that. So that's really all I know. I haven't gotten a lot of straight information. I've heard stuff that our seasons are going to be canceled, stuff like that, but I have no idea. So Counselor Reed can probably better explain.
So in the meantime, I mean, you and your classmates are active in the community, and I know that you're very engaged in your school. So what are some of the things that you are doing to use this time productively?
I have, I'm supposed to be running and doing stuff for track. I know people are getting assignments through Google Classroom and stuff like that. And so people are still getting work and stuff like that from the school.
Excellent. And getting outside and preparing for spring sports, in any event, that's going to be helpful, whether or not you compete, but hopefully you will be able to compete. What events do you do?
1500, 3,000, and pole vault.
Oh, really? Wow. Well, good luck with your training, and thank you for that update. And we hope that everything will proceed so the school can reopen soon.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Matthews? Thank you. Counsel Reed?
So just to clarify a little bit, and clarifying and knowing exactly what's going on in this moment is not necessarily helpful, because it's a very fluid process. But as of right now, we were closed down from today through April 1st, which is the Wednesday. So right now, we've just had an extended spring break. However, that may change at any time. So we're just keeping an eye on that, and keeping updates. And the district is very good about keeping in touch through email and remind and phone contacts and so forth, as far as all the parents and students involved with the district. So we look forward to seeing what's happening, and in the meantime, we're just trying to be flexible. And as Counselor Matthews points out, there are a lot of assignments that are available on classroom. I'm going to venture to say that most students have some makeup work they can be working on anyway. So there is lots to be done, and absolutely no excuse for being bored. So read a good book if you're bored. I strongly advocate that. So there's always something to do and always something to make you better, which is what school's all about. So in addition to that, oh, I guess I also wanted to acknowledge that... that the canceling of activities was really tough on a lot of people. The orchestra missed their trip to Seattle. The band Disneyland trip got canceled before Disneyland even closed. And there are some really exciting and important highlights, choir competitions, theater events, and all kinds of things that are really, a lot of people put a lot of hard work and money into these things. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that and I guess commiserate on some level. So that was a tough break. So hopefully, this won't last very long and we'll be able to get back to business as usual. But in the meantime, hunker down. So in addition, I also went to the Stormwater Advisory Meeting. And there's always lots of interesting things we learn there. Went to the Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association meeting. And one of the things that we discussed and did with that was we put a food barrel in at the, what was formerly known as Town and Country.
Valormentory.
Valormentory. Valormentory, thank you. And that was a really exciting opportunity. It was a way for the neighborhood associations to get involved with community. And Valormentory is eager to be part of this community and that the community center will be an excellent addition to the services that we provide. And so I really appreciate that. And we will monitor that and hopefully... And these donations go directly to the Kaiser Food Bank. They do not go to Marion Polk County Food Bank. So that is perhaps something important to know as well. And I know the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association is also putting food barrels at a few of their businesses as well. So hopefully, we'll do a little bit more with that. So that's a good cooperation, good cooperative effort. I went to the McNary Band Concert, and that was fantastic. Really excellent musicians and really interesting program and just very well done. And it was kind of the last row of mass gatherings for a while. And I'm so glad that I was able to go to that. We did have long-range planning. We also, at the Kaiser Heritage Board, have been talking extensively about what to do with that building. That is the theater, the art association, the library, and the museum. And it's been decided that that is now currently closed to the public. The tenants can do whatever business they need to do there in line with other state policy. But those for now are closed to the public. So that'll be a tough thing for a lot of people, but it is the most prudent thing to do at this point. We went to the Commissioner Breakfast, and that was a really great discussion. And Counselor Kohler talked about that. I'm sure Counselor Freeman will as well. We, I did participate in the city center cleanup, and that was great fun. We, as long as you were prepared for the rain and weather, which most people were, it was a good time, as it always is. It's a fantastic opportunity to get together, meet other people, serve the community. And it's a great time. And then now we have the Kaiser Homegrown Theater Board Meeting coming up. And that will be discussing how to rearrange our season. So we will not be doing anything until June as the Kaiser Homegrown Theater, but we'll make further announcements about that as we figure it out.
All right. Thank you very much. I'd like to also emphasize with the Kaiser Community Library, it was a very thoughtful decision. They know they're a lifeline for information. They have computers that people use very, very regularly, people who don't have computers at home. So they tried to find every way they could be able to stay open, but just did not feel that they had the ability to do that in a safe manner for both the public and the volunteers. So they've reluctantly made that decision at this time. But please watch announcements for the opportunities to open. They will work very diligently to be open as soon as it is safe to do so. Counselor Herrera, did you have a question?
Yeah, I hate to put you on the spot, but have you heard anything on the mandatory shutdown as far as the classified employees? I know they had a meeting this morning.
Yes.
Just so folks know.
Okay, so yes, the classified employees are the biggest concern right now in terms of employment for the Kaiser School District. And they're essentially treating this as a snow day, the same kind of category. And as such, the classified employees don't get paid for that time. And so there are lots of jobs that have become available as far as delivery and other jobs that are sort of related to this crisis that aren't usual jobs. And so some of the classified employees are able to get employment that way. And they can also access their sick leave or whatever else they can. And that is being worked out. So it is still being figured out. They're not being abandoned. Our superintendent is very aware of that class of people and the importance of the service they provide. So we're doing our best. And there also might be state or federal funds available to supplement that as well.
There are. The reason I was concerned is because I happen to be an occasional satellite ship, I guess. And I'm concerned because they're like the most vulnerable. They're the ones that would struggle to pay their bills. And they're not allowed like administration teachers to use. And they're actually requiring them to come in and do some... So there was discussion today, and I just was curious if the end result was something fair or equitable for those vulnerable people that are very important.
Absolutely, absolutely. We did get an email from Superintendent Perry. And she's, I'm convinced that she is doing her very best for that group of people. I know insurance is still in place. A lot of people were concerned about that. So I'm sure it's not going to be happy for everybody, but I believe that they are doing their best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Kohler had a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counselor Reed and I had discussed earlier about the Kaiser Food Bank and how that related to the Marion Polk Food Share. And she was concerned that they were getting charged for food delivery. And I visited with the president, CEO of the Food Share, Rick, and he said that it's been 10 years since they have charged for any delivery of food to like the Kaiser Food Bank.
Okay, we're getting that information from the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association people. And so that was my understanding.
Yeah, so I just wanted to...
And whether it's delivery or...
Paying for food.
Yeah, delivery or paying for food, that could be two different things. But at any rate, I don't mean to denigrate the contribution of Marion Polk Food County at all because they do take good care of us and they do, it is an excellent relationship. But it's also helpful to have some things going directly into our Kaiser Food Bank.
Right. So I just asked them specifically about that because that was a question that you had when we were talking the other day.
Excellent. Counselor President Freeman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A shout out to the Planning Commission. As you see, we did the street ordinance. And we had a lively discussion this last week in reference to chickens and ducks. And ducks. So more to come. We had three people come for public testimony, very well educated on chickens and ducks. So I learned some things about ducks I didn't know. So I appreciate that. So it was very passionate about their animals. So I appreciate that. And Marion County Commissioner Breakfast has been spoke about. But I think the thing that was helpful for me is just really talking about COVID-19. Chief, I brought it up at Police Academy too, is how our first responders really are going out in the community, but they're also protecting themselves. And you know, because we don't know who potentially may be infected or a carrier. And it's just, so that was really reassuring. And obviously, I know what's happening here at City Hall. We're cleaning more. Everyone's washing their hands. The jail's doing the same thing. And so just a lot of discussion about that and how everyone is staying safe. So that was just, I think, something that we all just need to be aware of. The Police Academy, Citizens Police Academy is done. I'm sorry to say it's done. We all graduated, I guess. And hats off to Lieutenant Copeland and everyone that helped. Thank you, Chief. And Saturday, I was not at the city cleanup because I had the privilege of participating with Detective Phelps in the, is it CONSUM? Is that how you say that? CONSUM? So I got to put my police belt on and I had a gun, not a real gun, probably, thank goodness.
No.
But it sounded like I had bullets in it. And I had my pepper spray and my baton and no taser. But you go through several scenarios and wow. I have a whole new appreciation. And you learn skills in your brain, like they're shouting at you. So I started shouting back. And then I was like, why am I shouting? Right? Because you're not supposed to shout back. So it's like, shh, be quiet. And then, you know, do you shoot? The first one, I did get shot right off the bat because I didn't see the gun, you know, in the video. But then the second time, I got it. And there was a lot of different scenarios. And I really appreciate Detective Phelps in having some really good conversations afterwards just about training in general for all of our officers. So I would encourage the counselors that haven't done that to sign up for next year. It was amazing. So thank you, Chief. And all of these gentlemen are doing it out of the goodness of their hearts on, you know, overtime, not paid overtime, right? And so some of them may, but some of them not. But I just really, really appreciate the time and effort that went into it. So thank you. What else do I have? Charter review, I'll let Counselor Smith talk about that, that we really have our agenda set and looking for community input. And attended the long-range planning budget session. So, and thank you to everyone that did cleanup.
That's all I have. Thank you very much. Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So yes, we had the Charter Review Committee kind of buttoning it up, getting ready for the next step, which will be April 21st, is that right? Got that? And currently, Mr. Johnson is working on a kind of a cheat sheet. We requested that we could come up with something that would be very simplistic so that we could actually get out there to the community what we're changing and have it in more layman's terms because it is, as he said many times, legal jargon. And so that's the goal there. We, I've also talked with Dave Dally from the Kaiser TV. And he and I are sitting down and going to come up with some different video strategies where we will put Mr. Johnson on the video, and he doesn't know yet, and Mr. Epley. And just going to talk about the different things. Hey, you know what? That's the beauty. I gotta tell you guys that at this meeting. That's just fun.
When we can say no.
It'd be really good because we want to get that out on social media so people can really truly understand what we're doing, what it is, what it even means to have a city charter. Because although we may understand it, the common person doesn't really pay that kind of close attention to local governments. So very excited about that. We're going to do some community outreach. If there's any groups out there that would like us to come and talk or do it via internet at this time, we are more than happy to do that. So that's a very important piece. I saw on social media, a lot of people are now getting their census stopped in the mail. And it actually was kind of funny because I think the girl who posted it was like, what is this and what does the government want? And so just so you know, this is something that we do every 10 years that's part of the Constitution of the United States. You're going to get this information in the mail. And it is really critical. And one of the things I was just looking up online here is why is the US Census so important? And item number five is emergency response. Detailed population information is critical for emergency response in the wake of disasters. First responders and disaster recovery personnel use census data to help identify where and how much help is needed. Similarly, demographic details from the census can assist with public health personnel and everything from tracking disease outbreaks to combating the opioid epidemic to providing healthcare for children. So it's really critical that you actually take the time and fill that out. One of the challenges that the census is now going to have is based on the COVID outbreak, that's going to make it a little difficult for the people. Usually, we'd go out to make sure that that census is filled out. If you don't do it online, they start showing up and knocking on your door. So if you want to avoid that, just go ahead and go online or call in. But it's really critical we take that time and we get that information back in. Nobody's coming after you. It's not that. It's just that we have to have this count. It's very, very critical. So please, if you see it, if you see people talking about it on social media, encourage them to get it filled out as quickly as possible. We get this done, get it behind us, and then we can use our federal resources and state resources in the most effective way. So that being said, a couple of things from my own personal world of business. Those that are concerned about making mortgage payments if you are having a loss of income, this kind of a situation with COVID is actually considered a federal, it's a natural disaster. So that falls under some different guidelines as far as making your mortgage payment. There will be more coming out per the different servicers that go back to whoever services your mortgage loan and start to look for information on how you can apply for modifications and things like that on your mortgage. There is help out there. There is help coming. So I just want to make sure everyone knows that. And another thing is, if anyone missed it, Comcast has now opened up all of their Wi-Fi to hotspots to anyone who needs internet. You do not have to be a Comcast client. You can jump on any of their hotspots. We want to make, they want to make sure that everyone's getting internet and information as quickly as possible. So they made that move last week. And there's some other additional things. So check out their website. They're not going to charge late fees or like we're doing with the water bill, we're not shutting anybody off from critical services. They're not doing that either. So just some little tidbits of information for some of the concerns that people are sharing online right now that I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much. Counselor Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm not as exciting as everyone else. I had to go down and take care of some personal business last week. I was out of town. I did attend the Stormwater, however, and obviously, the long-range planning. But I really don't have anything coming up because I'm quarantined in my home. So I will participate as much as I can by phone, and I will obviously read all the material. So that's really all I got. Sorry, I'm pretty boring.
Well, we're glad you're able to participate by phone. And stay healthy, okay?
I will. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Herrera.
You're looking sharper.
Thank you, Counsel Herrera. You're not looking too bad yourself.
And I would be the same as you if I had the same shit setup you do. By the way, Counselor Smith pretty much stole a lot of my, took a lot of my time.
Sorry.
But I want to emphasize on the census, that part, on the census. I want to emphasize that that's more barriers for some folks already. So as soon as we get those in the mail, as soon as we get the first thing, do it right then and there because that's just another barrier for, and this came from a organization I'm part of. And it's very important that we, even now, for those of you who don't know, last census 10 years ago, we were 40,000 in population below getting another representative, which means, that translates into everything you said, more funding for everything from school programs to, you know, and you hit the nail on the head, emergency. Anyway, that was my two cents on that. And during this, by the way, everything's canceled. Kaiser United, but one of the things that wasn't canceled was the Beacons. And we still had our meeting yesterday. And we're spaced out correctly. But if you know the Beacon people, they're all ADs and sports people. So we're loud. You can hear each other from a long ways off. It's pretty cool. And LA event, we're still having it because we're a small group and we were going to do the social distancing, the new word in our vocabulary. And we're still planning the event. It's going to go on for May 7th and right under calendars, folks. And we've been really blessed to get some additional funding from anonymous sources in the community. And so the more we get, the more folks we can help. And so it's been a really great, we are very blessed. And I want to shout out kudos to the county, And I want to shout out kudos to the county, even the Kaiser Fire Department, all of you guys, the guys that have been putting out the information there. Because I think it's very important that we get the correct information. And people, like I told you, Mayor, people are really hungry for information that's accurate. And it's, and I worry, being a person that's associated with schools, I worry about, you know, the school cultures are important to me. Because, you know, to a lot of communities, the ones I work in, Title I schools, they're actually food distribution centers. And a lot of folks don't look at them that way, but that's basically what they are. And so, and then the homeless, they're probably the most vulnerable to any kind of disease, you know, because of all their circumstances. I don't want to get to that.
I'll address that.
Yeah. But, and the third thing is, I'm concerned about our local businesses, you know, everybody's kind of, you know, and I think, and somebody put this, and I posted this, by the way, we got like 300 shares. And to go to your businesses and get like, gift certificates, call them, buy them, save them, stash them for rainy day down the road. You can take your wife or husband, but help these folks out because they got bills to pay. And there's, they can't bring their people in because they only expect 50 people in there, or whatever, you know, the latest is 50. And so, there's a lot of folks struggling out there. I'm not, not just, there are people that are trying to make a, I'm not talking about your big change, I'm talking about our local, local places. And we have a lot of them in Kaiser. And, you know, they're struggling. And today I bought one and I'm going to try to make it to go to buy one. For all of them, everybody bought at least two gift certificates for down the road because they got bills to pay. And so, so that's my two cents on the businesses. And last but not least, what's the last thing I had here? Well, I guess I'll pretty much end on that because, but like I say, I'm concerned that we get the right information out there in our community. And I'm proud of our community because we've been, this, this whole thing is, in my opinion, has been led locally. I mean, folks in the county, in the state, in local cities, we all have our own thing to do. And in our particular case, I was really relieved that we were helping the folks that can't pay their water bills and stuff like that. I wish we could do it all the time. I wish it wouldn't take a crisis to do the things we're doing. You know, it's funny to me that, that some of the things we're doing now, I thought, "Gosh, why can't we do this all the time to help folks?" But I guess the world we live in is not quite there yet. But I really am appreciative of our city and our county and our local people doing the right thing and getting the correct, accurate information out there. And I might be the only one that has lost a friend to COVID-19. From, well, the 25 that died, Sam, was a brother of my ex-for-friend or whatever you want to call it. So, it was, it hit pretty close to home. And it was a person that had an immune same thing. So, that's why it's important to me to get the information. Because according to her, if you would have known even a few weeks earlier, you know, not maybe, but it could have been helpful. So, anyway, so that's my two cents. Thank you for, everybody for showing up today. To me, it was important to show our community that we're here for them to lead the way, sort of. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to add a couple of things. Did you have something to add?
I was just wondering if, we had some kind of provision for a census drop-off here at City Hall. I know it's a little bit problematic with some of, some of the things that are going on. But it might help, it might break down a barrier if we had some kind of dropbox for that. I don't even know if that's...
I don't know that we can do that.
Yeah, I don't know either. I just, it popped into my head as a possible suggestion to help people accomplish this.
I'll look into it.
Okay, thank you.
What I do know is they have some weird restrictions. I wanted to volunteer and I can't because I'm elected official. They have some weird, I shouldn't say weird, they're for a reason. But they're kind of picky about certain things, so I, I'm not sure. And you'll, Chris will find out for sure.
Thank you. That's all.
It's a good idea. Thank you. And that's what I love about our community is that we find creative solutions to break down barriers. So, just to let you know, I did send an email last night to City Council and department heads regarding the governor's meeting, telephoned me last night with mayors and commissioners across the state. She listened very carefully to what we had to say. She asked us some, for our input on some very critical issues regarding our communities around our restaurants and bars, especially the food provision for people in our community that our restaurants provide. What we need in our different communities, from rural to, to Portland, so the whole gamut. It was a very interesting conversation. And one of the things that struck me was how every community is finding answers and ways to keep people informed and connected, whether they're rural or urban. Whether they're, you know, they have internet, you know, low tech, high tech, but really people are coming together to find ways of supporting and helping each other in a time when we don't always have answers, but we're willing to give each other the grace to find them. So I just sent a synopsis of what I heard last night. There was another telephone meeting this afternoon, just prior to the afternoon press conference with the governor, where she talked about the changes regarding our restaurants, that they will be takeout only. And then they're working with the Restaurant Association and the Grocers Association to make sure that there are opportunities for people to get the food they need and safe handling protocols for the workers involved. So, it's a very collaborative effort. The other big part of the governor's address this afternoon had to do with the collaboration for preparing the capacity of our health system in anticipation of what the forecasts are showing could be the number of people who may need hospitalization through this, through the spread of the coronavirus and what statistics are telling them. While it is forecasts and statistics, it is not necessarily predictive. Each of the things that we do to keep ourselves healthy, to keep our families healthy, to keep our neighborhoods healthy, are going to help change the curve. And most importantly, keep you part of the solution and not part of the problem. So the cooperation that everybody is showing by taking preventative steps personally as well as within their workplaces is making a difference. And I can't emphasize that enough. So keep doing the right things, you know, the basics that we're hearing. You know, keep listening to credible sources. I want to thank Chris and our staff for keeping and adding more links on our city website to credible authoritative sources of information. And encourage everyone to go to those sources and not to, well, I saw this maybe on Jackass or something, on Facebook or whatever, not a credible source, just a hint. Make sure the things you are going to actually are credible and authoritative so you can make informed decisions. That's how Kaiser rolls. We, we want to know so we can do the right thing. So please keep going to that. And I know that our city staff will do everything that they can to get the right information into all of our hands so we can weather this together. In other news, and yes, there is other news out there, believe it or not. Let's see. As was pointed out earlier, most things are being canceled or changed to electronic. With the change in the restaurants and so forth, normally I would have my monthly coffee with Kathy at a restaurant this weekend. That's going to be changed to something virtual. And I have to go home and figure out how to do that because I haven't done that before. Probably a, a live feed on Facebook so that people can ask questions and let me know what they're thinking about in this very interesting time. Let's see, what else is going on? Coming up would also be, the Council of Governments Board will meet tomorrow afternoon, again, virtually, on the telephone. Greater Governor Neighbor Association has been canceled. And let people know the Homeless Connect has been canceled. However, there are alternatives and they have been posted on websites. I've put up a connection. There is a website that is showing the different providers that are continuing to serve, especially the people among our community who are homeless or housing insecure. Be Bold Ministries are still delivering coffee and breakfast every day. They need hand wipes, sleeping bags, socks, and hygiene packs. Church at the Park is still providing safe parking. City Vibe is still serving dinner and providing donations on Fridays. Union Gospel Mission, Salvation Army, Lighthouse Shelter, Taylor's House, and Safe Sleep are all still open and operating. Donations and volunteers are, are very much welcome. They're working very hard to make sure that, and they already had the appropriate spacing in their shelters, so they are able to operate at the same capacity that they have been operating under up until this point. The barrier they're looking at would be that normally they would have to cease some of their operations by April 1st. And they have asked for a waiver to be able to continue to remain open for the foreseeable future, to provide safe sleeping quarters and access to hygiene facilities for the foreseeable future. So that's very important that they get that waiver, and I believe that will be coming. The Salem Warming Network, we've had a cold snap on top of it. So the Salem Warming Network has been open and operating to provide warming shelters for people in need. The Youth and Adult Day Centers are open, Home Host, the Salem Drop, Hope and Arches are all operative and taking care of youth and families experiencing homelessness. What we can do, you can provide in-kind donations. There are several drop-off points, including the Kaiser City Hall, where you can bring essentials such as sanitizing wipes and hygiene packs, socks, and other essentials for these organizations to be able to distribute to people directly. I would encourage people to give wisely. There are, it disgusts me to my toes, and I know it disgusts all of us, that there are people who would actually try to capitalize off of the, the prices that we are trying to navigate through, but there are people who are doing that. So please, give to known local organizations. If it's a place you haven't heard of, I would just say, don't do it without checking with the Secretary of State website for charitable organizations. Look them up, find out, please be informed in your giving. There are organizations you already know and that we can all trust. And I would ask people to please work with them so that your dollars and your donations actually get where you intend for them to go. That's about it for right now. Please stay tuned and together we're going to come through this just fine. All right, let's go then to other business. This time is provided for the mayor, city council members, or staff an opportunity to bring new or old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Counselor Reed, nobody actually takes their surries out anymore, so...
Well, they should.
Well, they should.
With the fringe on top.
With the fringe on top, that's right. So, in relation to COVID-19 being a fluid situation, it definitely is around here as well. We've tried to take measured steps along the way to keep our staff healthy because unless they're healthy, they can't serve the public. And that's our critical function. I've been very, very hesitant to take that final step, closing our, our City Hall side to walk in customers. But ultimately, this evening, I decided to go ahead and do that starting tomorrow. So, we're going to do our very best to still serve our customers. You know, folks who have construction plans or subdivision plans, need to drop them off, we're going to have a number that they can call and staff will come out to them and get them. We've already seen a lot of self-regulation of people choosing not to come in anyway. So our traffic has already become fairly light. But simply to protect our staff and best be able to serve the community going into the future, I made that decision today and it was not an easy one to make. So, just wanted you to know that. I'll try it for a week, see how it goes. And if it continues to, if it's doable, then we will continue on, especially based on the governor's current requirements, that the group's no greater than 25. And of course, the president's suggestion, the group's no greater than 10 in any one place. So, things are tightening down and we had to make that step. So, with that, do any of my folks in the audience have anything to add? Chief?
I'll come up just to reassure the public that we're still responding to all calls for service. If you need a cop, call us. I'm deferring to each individual officer to determine how he or she wants to respond, needs to respond to, to your call for service. Meaning you may or may not get a cop at your door. And if you do, you almost already won't get a cop to come in your door. We're trying to stay healthy so we can continue to provide more than just emergency services. Thank you.
Bill, do you have anything to add regarding line staff or staff out in the field?
Thank you, Chris. Yeah, all the field staff, we're still going to continue to operate as they have been at this point. We met this morning, talked about the things that we have to do. If things go bad, what I mean by that is a bunch of staff come down sick, can be a quarantine. Thankfully, we don't have a lot of daily have-to things. So we'll be able to manage that very easily. And it'll be, just be everybody take care of themselves. Don't come to work if you're not feeling well. Other than that, business as usual, as much as it can be.
Any questions for either of those two before I move on? Madam Mayor?
Yes, so I did get a question about parks. They're an outdoor, public space. As I understand it, at this point, we are asking people to self-regulate, to enjoy the great outdoors, get fresh air because that's part of keeping people healthy. But we're not allowing, or are we doing anything regarding a large group or events in our parks?
Not at this time. We talked a little bit about that late this afternoon, some of my staff and I. And, you know, the big toy came up. You know, people are going to be playing with the big toy with their kids. That's kind of self-regulating. Skate park's another example. There was 25 or 30 kids over there this afternoon, or folks, I don't think they were all kids. It's a real challenge. It's, it's virtually impossible to close those off without enforcement to keep people away. And so, my position at this point is self-regulate. They're there to use. Please, take precautions as you would anywhere else you go, for yourself and your kids and the rest of the community.
And so, and I talked a little bit with Clint today about the amphitheater and the concert series. I guess my point at this point is, if we're actually having concerts, things will have gotten better. So, you know, by that, otherwise we'll, we'll play by, play that by ear. Fun actually intended, I meant.
Thank you. I got that question, so I wanted to get that out there.
Mr. Brown?
The only thing I wanted to add is that we are meeting tomorrow to restructure our phone, how we answer phones and where they go so that they are always answered. So, it's, we're, we're going to have to figure out how that transfer of information and plans. It would be nice if we could do it all electronically, but we're just not quite there yet for the entire public. And so we still have to make provisions to actually transfer some papers occasionally. But we are working hard to make sure that it is as good as it possibly can be.
Mr. Wood?
I guess I would like to add, we did send out a notice that as far as utility billing statements go, we won't be turning anyone's water off in the near future. We will give an announcement once we reinstate our common practices. At this point, it is indefinite as far as how long that will extend out. I would encourage customers, if you can pay your bill, to continue to pay your bill. The city also has its own bills that we need to pay. If this goes on for an extended period of time, we, we're all, I guess we're all in it together. So, I would add that. In addition, with the closure of City Hall, I do encourage all of our customers to pay electronically. We have an automated phone system. We have an online bill pay system. You can always call the utility billing customer support and they can take payments that way as well. Start and stops, if you need to stop service or start service. We have an online system for that, or you can also call in. Just about anything we do, we can do electronically. And I would encourage all of our citizens to take advantage of that for their safety and for ours. And with that, if there's any questions?
What about the dropbox?
The dropbox?
We do have a dropbox in the parking lot as well.
Yep. And court?
At this point, court is still on this week. There's, unfortunately, there are a few things that we can't get out of just because of the legal requirements. At this point, it's going to be a relatively small docket. If there are people who are scheduled for court this week that would like to reschedule, they can reach out to the court clerk and we can make accommodations that way as well. I do anticipate there'll probably be maybe 20 people or so here for court on Wednesday. So we will be below that 25-person threshold.
Any other questions for Tim? Excellent. City Counselor Johnson, City Attorney Johnson?
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Counsel. I sent an email earlier today and Tracy, I think, put copies at the dais with regard to the issue that came up at the beginning of the meeting. And that is the rule in Section 3.9 of the council procedures. So, the motion tonight was a one-time motion to allow Counselor Parsons to appear by phone. The question is whether or not you want to look at making changes to the council procedures, which we would bring back next meeting, before I forget, because this is not a final action. You're not giving up, like, a final action. You do not need to suspend the rules for this. That, that rule only implies that something you need to decide and, you know, not come back on. So yours, any direction you give to me would be preliminary. It wouldn't be the final action. We would come back with an actual resolution to change those council procedures. Currently, that section of the rule reads, "Telephonic, video, or internet attendance does not ensure that all testimony, discussion, staff information, and deliberations are available fully and equally. Therefore, methods of attendance other than personal onsite attendance shall not be considered quote 'in attendance', and a council member may not vote unless physically present at the meeting." That's the rule we suspended for one time at least. So I listed some options there for you. In the middle of page one is to just remove the requirement entirely. That's the way it was for several years. I really can't remember how many years ago we changed that rule. And it is, it is, I think, generally a good rule. As I point out in option one, I, I wouldn't recommend just removing it entirely. I left, we always try to go through all the options, of course, even ones that might not be a good idea. Or I might not think it a good idea, you might think is a great idea. So, but it is sometimes with certain testimony, depending on tonight. Tonight wasn't a bad meeting to have by phone. But sometimes it's hard if we have exhibits, sometimes hard to hear the witnesses, et cetera. So I wouldn't recommend option one to remove it entirely. One, that the mayor suggested. Number two, automatically allow telephonic attendance if there's a state of emergency declared by the city, state, or federal government. Number three, allow... Number three, allow telephonic attendance by suspension of the rules, which is a 2/3 majority, by the way, if you didn't know that. But again, that would require two votes, it'd be a, you know, two-vote thing. Another, just for an option, I said a 3/4 majority, you could have either. And by the way, if you had telephonic attendance allowed by any majority, either simple majority or a supermajority, you can have that without suspensions of the rules and you would only have to have one vote, if you see what I'm getting at. And then, or a combination. For example, you could choose the automatic one so you wouldn't have to vote, or if it's a, depending on circumstance. And again, I want to, as I mentioned to the mayor before the meeting, this involves a lot of other situations other than COVID-19. It's actually a good thing that this came up in a way, because we do have the situations and the rules aren't truly clear that you can just suspend this for that. And so it'd probably be a good idea to make a change. But those are some of the options. You folks may have some more. And whether or not you want to deal with this tonight or not is totally up to you. If you give me direction tonight, we can come back with the procedures next meeting. So I'm going to stop there. There's another issue, but I thought I'd stop there and see how you folks might want to deal with that, if at all, up to you.
Thank you very much. So a lot of us are finding that our emergency preparedness has some holes in it, both in our home supplies, but also in our operating procedures. And this is one that popped up pretty fast. And considering that we should have a continuity of operations for the council in the event of an emergency, we've had a lot of conversations about Cascadia and other natural disasters. And this is, this is an opportunity to make sure that we can quickly convene and take care of business if we need to. So right off the bat, I would like to suggest that at the very minimum, that we automatically permit media-type of meetings, you know, the telephonic or however, we need to put that upon the declaration of an emergency. So, and if we want to add anything else to that, this would be a good time to do that. Councilor Herrera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Would this require, and this might be a little wack out there, but a little more thought, like maybe even a work session or something to think out all the possibilities in the future, because they are going to change, I think, in my mind? Or is this something that we think we should address now?
In my opinion, I think this, doing the emergencies, the automatic for emergencies is something that we can very easily do now.
Oh, no, we could.
But if we want to add additional situations in which it would be appropriate for phone in or call in, we can definitely have that conversation and add to that. Our council rules are pretty easy to amend, because they are our rules. They're what we have chosen to operate under. They're not statute, they are not ordinance. So we can make those changes. We have that ability to do that.
Okay. Just curious out there.
That's a good question. Councilor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just kind of wanted to clarify that state of emergency is very specific thing called for specific reasons, right?
Correct.
And so that covers, that, it's not up to us to cover every single circumstance which would constitute an emergency. State of emergency already kind of covers that, whether it's called by the city, state, or other entity. Is that correct?
City attorney, as I understand it, that is correct, is under very specific circumstances.
And you reminded me of something kind of connected, Councilor Reed. Obviously, if you wanted to go that direction, I would write it a little more specifically than I did there. A state of emergency in Crook County declared by the state wouldn't affect that decision. So it'd be something that at least directly or indirectly would affect us. I would write it that way. But obviously, this declaration of emergency pretty directly affects the city of Kaiser. If, for example, we had a flood situation and before we could even declare it, the state declared it, then that would apply to, for example, so.
Right. Councilor Reed, do you have a follow-up?
I do. And I, is there a distinction between allowing and establishing the meeting as a telephonic meeting? There are a couple of different things. I mean, at some point, we may all need to have a telephonic meeting.
Right.
Whereas right now, as tonight, we only have, you know, one councillor participating by telephone. And so would we need to make a distinction between that kind of thing as well, or?
The way I anticipated, and I didn't get into a great level of detail in this email, would be that, of course, if you had a situation where none of you were here, or less than a quorum, that you could still vote on that issue as a threshold matter. So the mayor, for purposes of declaring a quorum, would allow a vote on it at the beginning of the meeting, if that's what you're getting at. So in other words, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be something that would be automatic backup. The automatic part with a declaration of emergency would happen automatically. And none of you would need to be here, which is not required by state law. It's our rules that require the physical presence. So state law does allow a totally telephonic meeting, for example. So I'm just looking at situations where you may have a situation that perhaps is not to the level of an emergency, but would be appropriate to allow a telephonic meeting. And I feel it should be fairly limited. You folks may feel differently. You know, you could allow by simple majority. I put it in there because the rule was put in for a reason. And that is to have everyone be able to fully grasp what's going on at the meeting, being able to hear everything, see all the exhibits, et cetera. And although I think we need to make exceptions to that, I think, you know, my thought is it needs to be fairly limited.
Good. Okay. Any other questions? Or Council President Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I know this is in just reference to the council participating. So would we ever allow the public to participate via phone? I mean, I know we broadcast on Kaiser TV and we have Channel 23, but what happens in the event, both of those would not be an option and we are meeting via phone? I'm just asking the question, because I know you can have the public participate via phone. It's a little more challenging and you have background noise. I mean, it's.
Apparently, you need to pull up your microphone.
Wow. So.
The background noise, you're saying?
Yeah. So, so is this, this one, as I take it, is only for us councillors to do conduct business?
If you want to address the other issue, that would be a separate issue.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And just, just as a point of clarification, the agency I work for does both. They will have meetings that are entirely, the board is not present altogether in one room, and they do allow for and accommodate public participation via the phone. So that is not an uncommon practice in non-emergency situations already, under Oregon State open meeting law. So we are, by doing this, we still remain in compliance with open meeting, because anybody would be allowed to phone in and listen to the entire conversation, see everything that we see if we've been sent, anything electronically that would automatically be posted anyway, because that's what we do. It is not, the only agendas are required under state law to be posted, as I understand it, and not all agencies comply even with that. But our practice has been to be very diligent about posting the agendas and the entire packet for everyone to be able to see the same materials that we see. And that would continue to be paramount for the city regardless of whether it's for present in the room or electronic. So that would not change. The other piece that, and maybe we can take this up later, because to Councilor Herrera's point, there might be other really good reasons for someone to need to call in. And tonight, Councilor Parsons needs to come in before a medical reason. And I think that if a person is able to participate mentally in, you know, they're not recovering from surgery, let's say, where they're still medicated, but able to participate but for some other reason, you know, recovering maybe from an injury or something like that wouldn't, I think it would be appropriate for us to accommodate a councillor to still fully participate in all of the deliberations of council, because their participation is vital to us. We are a team, we are seven. We need all seven of us here to get the full benefit of everybody's thoughts and experience to best make decisions for our community. So I would really like to see that be added at some point as an additional option. Councilor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So if I'm sitting on the beach in Hawaii.
On vacation.
And you hurt yourself.
I stubbed my toe.
You got attacked by a shark.
Country hill on a pop top.
My question is, when do you, when do you start and stop that?
Well, and people do take vacations and so forth. And if, and that was a situation where I called in because I was out of town for a family event, and it was a vote I wanted to make sure I participated in. I had some additional complications because there was an F3 tornado. And I had to take a quick dive into a storm shelter. So that made it fun. But I did make it out in time to, for the vote. And the vote was on chickens.
Ah, chickens.
So I will always remember that vote very fondly.
You have another opportunity.
I know. And if we'll be without an F3 tornado, even better. Councilor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just as a reminder, we can always suspend the rules as necessary anyway, right?
Yes.
No matter what the rules are. So rather than, you know, perhaps trying to anticipate every contingency, we can start, at least, at least this will serve our purposes right now and in a general sense, and we can make whatever other arrangements we can as needed.
Councilor Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am in full agreement. There is no way for us to anticipate everything. I think this is a great start to resolve the issue at hand, which we do not know at what level that's going to continue. We do not know whether or not the government's going to say, no, you can't do it at all. So I think for tonight's purpose, it's a great option, is just saying underneath the emergency declaration that we should move forward on that and then talk about the other things at another time, you know, as we, as we expand. But I think that's the critical piece right now.
So if that's the consensus of council, I'll come back with.
Let me pause, if I may. Councilor Parsons, would you like to weigh in?
No, I agree with, I agree with option two. I think, I think that, I think right now, under the emergency, you know, that's the way I, you know, I spoke about it and my doctors, you know, said I need to quarantine and that's what I'm doing, because, you know, it was declared an emergency and I think that's, that's a good starting point right there, so.
All right.
So with that, Madam Mayor, I'll come back with an amendment to address option two, but I'll also clarify what I think the general rule is anyway, because it doesn't specifically say you can suspend the rules. So I'll make that clear, that that rule can be suspended by a 2/3 majority, which is the automatic one, is that?
So automatic for a declared emergency is what I'm hearing, because that will ensure continuity of operations and then other under circumstances, that it would be by the majority? The 2/3 majority or just simple majority?
Well, that's what I'm asking. The suspension of the rules, for those of you that don't know, by Robert's rules, is a 2/3 majority.
Okay.
So.
So I guess that's a given. Okay.
Okay.
All right. So we've got the continuity and then we have the option of other, under other circumstances, can't even say that once, such as, you know, a medical need or an absence that a councillor would like to be able to participate. And then that will be, we can make that decision case by case.
I think that's a fine way to proceed and I'll get that ready for the next meeting. The other issue at the end of my email was with regard to other committees, advisory boards. You do not need to take any action on that if you don't wish to. I just was bringing it up. The city of Salem has canceled or suspended, I guess, all advisory committees and boards. We don't have very many scheduled right now anyway. The Kaiser Public Arts Commission is scheduled for tomorrow. Other than that, we don't. And the corollary issue there, regardless of whether or not you want to take any specific action on that, is there's sort of an unwritten rule. I tried to find it until Tracy reminded me it was unwritten.
That's why they call it unwritten.
It's really hard to find when it's unwritten. My general advice has been that if it seems, if it appears appropriate, that the committees follow for those rules that are appropriate, the council rules of procedure, kind of makes sense to me. So my general guidelines to the committees have been no telephone based on that. So the question is, since that's an unwritten rule, that's up to you folks, is whether or not you want to weigh in on that, whether you feel it's as critical as council meetings or not, and whether or not you have any thoughts on that. And again, you don't have to decide that tonight, I was just bringing it up.
Mr. Brown.
The only thing that I would add to that particular last point about other committees having to follow that rule is, as in the Art Commission, we've actually had issues trying to make sure that we have quorums. And though sometimes it is important that they see the materials, other times it's less important. And we're trying to get these committees staffed and volunteers participating and making sure that we have these people, these positions filled. When we start making other requirements in today's busy world, sometimes it's difficult to say, well, you always have to be at the meeting, or you always have to, we're going to take attendance, and if you're not participating at a certain level, then you have to be removed, or whatever we've, you know, those rules start getting pretty in-depth. And I'm thinking that some of the committees, for example, the Art Commission, is less important that we actually have a body in the chair every meeting than getting their participation and getting them committed to participating generally in the committee. So I would just throw that out there for your consideration, that some things, like the Planning Commission, is statutorily required. And those, that may have a little bit different kind of threshold than a committee like the Art Commission. So I throw that out there for your consideration.
So what you're saying is that it has been the unwritten rule that, since we don't allow phone in, that the committees have not done so. But in making the change to our rules, that under an emergency declaration, I'm thinking, you know, Planning Commission budget, that phone in may be necessary under emergency situations. So I would not have a problem allowing our committees and commissions to have the same open meeting, law-compliant, phone-in options, especially if they have agenda items that need to be handled. Where the question in my mind comes up with the others is the, giving the chair the discretion and the committee to, under other circumstances, to be able to suspend the rules to allow someone to participate by phone. And do we want to extend that same option to committee chairs that we extend to us as a council for that purpose? Councilor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I guess just to clarify, this is an allowing thing rather than requiring thing. So rather than saying, if you can't be at the meeting, you have to phone in, that's not what we're doing here. We're just allowing it as an option, just as, you know, councillors are not required if they're on vacation or whatever, they'd be excused and not required to phone in. So this is, just to clarify that, that's what we're talking about, right?
That's, I believe that that would be correct.
So it wouldn't be the barrier that Nate's worried about? Is that correct?
To remove that barrier, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So with council's permission, that would also extend to our committees and commissions so that if decisions need to be made, especially with our statutory commissions, that during an emergency, we would also be able to extend the online or telephone open meetings. And then with the commit, with the other situations, that the suspension of the rules vote would be permitted under certain circumstances. Do we want to limit those circumstances, or is that a discussion for another time? You know, I'm thinking people, again, you know, medical issues, having to be away for family events and so forth, or just life happens and you can't get there from here. You're on the other side of the bridge, for example.
If I, if I may, Madam Mayor, if, I think there's probably a lot of different choices. Nate brings up a couple of interesting issues that maybe don't rise to the level of emergency, but still are maybe are convenient to be able to get participation, which I think we can all understand. But because there's a lot of nuance there, perhaps, probably, I can discuss with the staff and bring back. Yes.
That sounds great. Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That sounds good. It does kind of read right here, you're asking whether or not we should cancel the meetings for a period of time? Am I following that right?
It's totally up to you. The issue came up in my mind because I've been in close contact with the Salem City Attorney, and that's what they did. Again, it's just an option for you folks. Our meetings are sparsely attended. I don't, I believe most meetings, so I don't think it rises to the level of enough people with regards to the governor's order. So it's totally up to you on whether or not that's an option you want to take. I think some of the committees are kind of self-regulating and don't have a lot on the agenda anyway, and so they postponed their meetings. At Tracy, we have other than K-PAC. We don't have any coming up in the next few weeks, I think.
Next week, we have Kaiser Points of Interest Committee, next Thursday.
So there's two that I know.
That's all, that's all that I can think of. For the rest of the month? We have two for the rest of the month, and then we get into April.
Right. And the chairs, we've always kind of taken the position that the chairs have some discretion there on suspending the meetings, so they may decide on their own. I don't know.
Right. There's some that, you know, like the Planning Commission, that that's a little bit of a different animal, so to speak. But I think that I would rather take it week by week as we watch things unfold, rather than make a long-term change. And then we have, we know that the Arts Commission can meet safely according to public safety and health guidelines tomorrow night. So I have seen no reason to cancel that at this time. Again, everything is subject to changes as things develop, and we encourage everybody to please stay connected online or, you know, phone the chair if you have a question about a committee or commission that you're interested in attending or that you are a member of. Counselor Smith? Oh, Mr. Brown?
I was just going to say, I don't expect a packed house tomorrow at the Art Commission.
No, but they should come through and see the beautiful artwork at a socially distanced spacing, but it's absolutely beautiful, and people should enjoy that because art is part of keeping us mentally and emotionally healthy as well. All right. Do you have enough to go on for recommendations?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So that was a great conversation. Mr. Epley?
Just two additional things really quickly. I want to touch on declaration of emergency at the local level. You'll hear around, that around the state, some cities have declared local emergencies at the city level. I'm not really certain what their situations are. I know in certain instances, it's so that they can close certain services that they provide that we do not, like a library or a senior center, et cetera, where it makes sense. In analyzing our scenario, we don't provide a lot of those services. There is nothing that I can determine that declaring an emergency gains our citizens or our businesses over not declaring an emergency. So sometimes if you have a local emergency, like a flood or an earthquake or whatnot, and it happens to be localized, and you declare an emergency, you can get FEMA funding and reimbursement that way. The federal government has declared a national emergency, and they're parsing out resources on a regional level, and that region is being defined as a state. And our state has already declared an emergency at the statewide level. So there does not appear to be any need for us to declare a local emergency at this point. So I just want to kind of put that out there. And, you know, primarily it's because I don't think we can get anything, I don't think we gain anything by it. There's nothing that our businesses or our citizens can gain by us declaring an emergency, otherwise we would be considering it. The only other thing that I throw out there for your, not even necessarily your consideration, just for your information, I found this interesting. The city of San Francisco has issued an order for their citizenry to, what is it? Shelter in place. Thank you. I knew it was a serious term. But yeah, sheltering in place is a big deal. So they are, they are basically declaring something just akin to martial law in San Francisco, so.
Considering the high density of the population there, the close proximity, that's about the only way you could get social distancing. It would be something like that. We live at a much lower density rate when you look at the transmissibility of anything communicable, not just COVID-19. So, you know, I'm sorry that they have to take those steps. We do have a very robust public health system here. We have better opportunities for social distancing. And along those lines, though, for people, keeping people connected emotionally, I want to encourage people to make phone calls and write notes to people who are shut-ins that you know, or people in senior centers, because the, while our general community is not under that kind of restriction, all of our senior centers and assisted living centers are. Because of the high vulnerability of the residents of those facilities, they have taken the extraordinary measures of making sure that they don't have visitors or run the risk of bringing infection into these living facilities. And that has been very, very difficult for the residents. So please, phone calls, cards. If your kids are out of school, they need something to do, and a beautiful picture that is sent to one of our local care facilities, I think would brighten some people's day. So thank you for reminding us of that.
And that's it? Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions of our city staff? Thank you.
Yep.
Yes.
Counselor?
Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A constituent asked me a question earlier today, and it was, does the city have a number or a knowledge of any way that senior citizens or other people that are high-risk that can't get out, that we can maybe go shopping for them or something like that?
So Counselor Herrera.
I know organizations that, nonprofits that actually do that very thing.
Perfect.
And I actually, well, not anymore, but I was involved with it. And the other ones, like Meals on Wheels, are connected with that, too. Do you know that? But there are entities out there that are actually looking after during times like this. Now, I compare it to the snow time, because that's the time, the last time I remember. But I know that there are, because I had asked that question back then during the snow, whenever we got snowed in for two weeks, or whatever that was.
Yeah.
And there were people that had a harder work doing that. So there are some people out there, churches and nonprofits.
Is it 211, which is the number for social services? That would be, that would be the best place. The city is not going to be able to provide that service. We just don't have the staffing to do it. But 211, I believe, is the right number for social services.
These people that asked me about it said, is there a way that I can come and help and do that? They said, I'd be more than willing to go do some shopping for somebody that can't get out because of health concerns.
I would suggest going to Meals on Wheels. I think that is a well-established network, and they have clients that are already, you know, in their database. And then other seniors that need that assistance right now can also contact Meals on Wheels. And I think they would be a really good clearinghouse for being able to accomplish that. I've seen those same posts on Facebook as well, people asking, I'd be happy to run errands for you, be happy to go pick up your prescriptions for you. People want to help, and they want to make a real difference, and I love that about our community. And I've heard some calls for Meals on Wheels in a number of communities. So I would suggest going there. Also, if we hear of some other local, well-established organizations that are already offering those services, we will look to post those links on our Facebook page as well to direct people. Counselor Herrera?
I just mentioned that our church was involved in doing that very thing, too.
St. Edwards?
Yeah. We used to have a, I haven't been up lately, but we used to have a group of guys that would do that.
So St. Edwards offering some services?
I don't know. St. Edwards has about 270 different outreach ministries, Knights of Columbus, anyway, lots and lots of folks that do different things, and that would also be a good place to start. Counselor Kohler, to answer your question, I'm not prepared to be the clearinghouse to connect people to people.
What have you been doing?
Not a thing. Absolutely nothing. But I'm not prepared to take on that as an additional responsibility at this time. So I would, I would ask those people to contact churches or other social services that are already geared up to doing that.
Yeah. So I think by providing the links to the services that are already in place to help make them more robust, I think that's where we can do our best work, is help them to do that and connect people who want to volunteer to go to those locations. Also, Marion Polk Food Share, I remember seeing a post earlier, is also, you know, gathering up food, helping prepare that for distribution and delivery. So I would encourage people to go to them as well. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Interesting enough, during my research on Marion Polk Food Share, I said, is there any qualifications for receiving foods and such from the food banks? And they said, if you show up, you're qualified.
Yes.
Which is pretty interesting. Now, the other thing, Mr. Epley, I wasn't suggesting that we become a clearinghouse, but if there are people that need help, we just want to make sure that they know there is ways to get that.
Sure.
That's what I was looking for.
Sure.
And I would emphasize that there is no qualification barrier to receive food from Marion Polk Food Share or the Kaiser, and I can't speak for the Kaiser Community Food Bank, but I know specifically for Marion Polk Food Share. You come because you need food. You are going to get good food.
I would offer that if there is a group out there that is doing that kind of thing, because that's a valuable service, email me, phone call me, and we will put the link on our website. I wonder whether or not we're the likely place somebody would search for that kind of service, but if they happen across us, we would have that link.
Or our Facebook page.
They will because I'm posting the links. So yeah, people are going there.
Okay.
Speaking of posting links, Counselor Smith, you were sharing with me that our Facebook page is getting quite a bit of action as we've been raising the awareness that we have that social media presence.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, it is. It's been probably a little bit of a headache because I've been pushing on this, but it's actually becoming very effective, and we have a great resource working with us, David Dally. And so just by some of the things, just the, actually, thank you, Tim, for bringing up the bill, the water bill. We put that on the Facebook page for the city of Kaiser, which we hadn't really been utilizing very much. And the staff is doing a great job. I've seen a lot more traction, a lot more posts, and I'm now an admin, and I've seen the increase, and it's like had 5,000 views, many, many shares, many comments. So it's great to see that. I'm really appreciating all the work that they've been doing, but great information on there. So thank you for helping them get that up and going.
Sure.
Awesome. Thank you, and thank you for persisting in that. All right. Let's go back to our agenda. Communications, I don't have anything at this time. Agenda input, April 6th, we will meet at 7:00 PM in regular session. We plan to be here. If we will be electronic, we will know in advance and be able to get that out to members of the community. April 13th, at 6:00 PM, we will have our Kaiser Parks tour. Again, subject to change depending on the circumstances. And then April 20th, 7:00 PM, we will meet here in regular session. Is there anything else for the good of the order? All right, seeing done, the time is 8:43, and we are adjourned.